Switching round. We're staying down for the vote, staying down for the vote.
Playing musical chairs.
Recording.
Yes.
All right, thank you for your patience, everyone. I would like to ask for a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion denied in executive session.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Giuliano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe clerk Perola, we have an add-on item for the consent agenda.
We do. Shall be known as action item or resolution number 13. Resolution to authorize votes in Vigliata P L L C to accept a settlement offer made in the case of Burdane versus Village of Port Jefferson and James Mardaco.
Do we have a...oh, so that makes 13 items on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the items on the consent agenda minus number 12, which is the warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Howks, seconded by trustee Cassay. All in...any discussion further?
Is there an attorney?
Okay.
Want to make a statement?
If questions come up later, yeah, but otherwise.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, and now we will be going into the public portion of our meeting. And we're going to move up to the Diaz. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. We could all please stand. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to the Incorporated Village of Port Jefferson's public meeting section of the first meeting of the month, August 7th, 2023. We would like to start our public meeting with a report by the Port Jefferson Village Code officials and Suffolk County Police. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. There we go. Can you hear me? Yeah, good, all right. Good evening, my name is Officer Muller. I'm with the community liaison for the sixth precinct. We have statistics compared from last year to this year. There was a slight increase in the calls to service, meaning 911 calls, but that increase came from mental health transports. So last year, we had five. This year, we had to respond to about 13 of them, where we take people or transport them to Stony Brook. When we're talking about crimes, like assault burglaries, you didn't have any. Harassments went down, harassment being people putting their hands on each other and that causing serious bodily injury. We did have two robberies, one which was a guy that attempted to pull a postal worker out of his vehicle. So the actions constituted a robbery for that. The other one was a credit card stolen from a vehicle that was left unlocked. Please lock your vehicles. There were 47 motor vehicle accidents that were reported. Last year, there was only 23, so there's an increase. Usually during the summer, there's more people that like to come down here, so we attribute that to increasing people. And also, there was approximately 130 summonses issued by Suffolk PD down here in the Port Jeff Village. About two Saturdays ago, we made a lot of noise in the afternoon because we assisted in transporting or escorting a 1952 Jeep from the firehouse here in Port Jeff to the Setoka Firehouse. That was a retired Marine that was raising money for veterans, so it caused a lot of noise. I apologize ahead of time for that, or later, actually, being late for that. And please be careful with ID theft and fraud. If you're getting texts from Amazon, from Netflix, from any company that you work for asking you for money in the form of gift cards, it's a scam. So please be verified with the number you have for the institution you're working with, but we've seen an increase on these type of electronic type crimes, not necessarily here in Port Jeff, just overall. Any questions for me? I love it.
Mayor Shepperle, members of the board. Chief Owen here. Going to start off with traffic surveys that we are conducting and that will be conducted. We just completed a traffic survey of Brook Road. As some of you may be aware, there's been some issue as far as who can park where, what, when, and how on Brook Road. That is being decided upon by the board. It'll be...it'll take quite a while, but we did conduct a traffic survey. Some of you, if you traveled down Brook Road, you may have seen the speed trailer. The data that I acquired today for the two-week period, July 24th to August 7th, 192 vehicles traveled past the speed trailer. 139 of those were either at or below the 30 mile an hour speed limit. 53 of those were above, with the highest speed being 41. The average speed of any car going down Brook Road during this survey was 26.8 miles an hour, so that's below the 30 mile an hour range. As you know, when the school year starts, it's 15 miles an hour. So whether we revisit Brook Road once the school year starts to try to compile the data for when the school hours, we'll try to do that. Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, it was a positive survey with positive results. Our next one coming up is going to be Scraggy Hill, right by the grade school. Again, we had a meeting about the traffic at Scraggy Hill as far as the speed bumps go, as far as stop signs. We're going to do the survey again, starting tomorrow, again, for a two-week period. I was out there today, surveying the area, and sitting there, I have an unmarked truck, so people don't know who I am, just sitting in there. Six cars passed by going eastbound. Five of those cars drove around the speed bump. And these are residents, okay? So these are the people that are complaining about the speeding, but they're not obeying the things that we put in place to prevent speeding. So again, we've had a meeting about what we're going to do, possibly extending the speed bumps, or they call them speed tables for both lanes, that would curtail someone from driving around them, possibly putting up stop signs, additional stop signs in the area. Hopefully, those things will pass, we'll be able to do that, and it's for the safety of everybody, especially once the school year comes into play. And after that, the next traffic survey will be on Sheep pasture Road in the area of Midland, right around where the entrance to the...where the train tracks are there. Okay, we've been getting some speeding complaints from over there, reckless driving, so that'll be next. As far as events that have happened in the past, we handled Port Paws and Port Palooza and other than the rain on Sunday for Port Paws. All the...both of those events went off, no major incidents to report, and as far as I know, everybody had a good time and everything was handled well. I had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce last month that went well. They voiced their opinions, ideas, and concerns, and it's...I think it's...it was very fruitful, and we're mending some gaps that may have been created, and I'll just leave it at that. Some of you may have noticed the two new initiatives that we have implemented downtown, Bike Patrol and Foot Patrol. I've gotten both positive reaction from both the officers that are doing the Bike Patrol and the Foot Patrol and the community. People seem to like it. They like to see the guys out there on bikes, to see the guys out there on foot in the downtown area. So it's...right now, it's a pilot project, and if need be, we can extend to Uptown, but for right now, it's downtown. Like I said, I think it's a positive, another positive for us. Training. We just had our annual firearms qualification, including live action rounds on the line and classroom instruction. So whenever you see anybody out there from code that has a firearm, just know that they have been trained to the state qualifications, okay? They've had classroom training and they've passed the live firing rounds. Also, we're getting...what else do we have here? Oh, let me just back it up to scanners at the beaches. I don't know if anybody's been down to the beaches yet, and the young lady or gentleman will come out with a scanner and scan your car if you're a village resident. That program has been great. I haven't heard any negatives about that, maybe one problem, but as far as I know, everyone's been cooperating, whoever's been scanned, and no one's had a problem. We haven't had a parking problem at either beach at all, all summer, so hopefully it stays that way. We have our annual first aid and CPR certification coming up. That's going to be in September, so again, know that the officers out there are certified in first aid and CPR, as well as stop the bleed. And then another thing that we're going to implement, probably September, maybe the end of this month, we're going to hold a training course with the employees at Village Center. There seems to be some sort of confusion as to when do we call who and why do we call them and whatnot, as well as report writing. So I'm going to handle that one myself. We'll do that with the employees, this way they know, like I said, when to call us, when to call Suffolk County PD, when to call both, and how to write the report and when to write a report. I'm going to move on to our complaint report recap. For the month of July, we wrote 91 complaint reports. These are incident reports that we write to document what's going on in the village, for the most part. Aided cases, noise complaints, traffic conditions, disturbances, disorderly people. That's the main thing. No real crime that we're reporting. As Officer Muller said, we're down in crime in the village, which is good, especially during the summer months when we see a spike in people. And all those reports are mostly written in the downtown area. As far as summonses go, summons recap, we wrote 521 summonses in the month of July. And I'm going to reiterate from last month, overtime parking meters, missing license plates, and uninspected vehicles are the top three. If you help us, we can help you. There's also a thing that I'm reiterating to my officers about discretion. We don't always have to write the summons. We can give a warning, we can talk to somebody, we can let it go, so to speak. So hopefully, they heed the word and hopefully we'll see some results, but like I said, help us help you. If you have a vehicle that needs to be inspected, inspect it. If you have a vehicle that needs two plates, and last I checked, in New York State, you need two plates. If you...I don't care if you have a vanity, BMW, Lamborghini, whatever, throw the plate on the front, because if Port Jeff doesn't write it, Patchogue will, or Brookhaven will. Somebody will write it. So just if you do what you got to do, we'll do what we have to do. Let's see what else we have. I want to fill you...before I call Chief of Patrol Jimmy Mardaco up, I just want to fill you in on an incident that we had, and just to show you how well we work, or how well law enforcement agencies work together. I received an email about a month ago about a bicycle that was stolen from Stony Brook University. It was a picture of a gentleman that took the bike. The person who owned the bike had a GPS on the bike. It was a $1,000 bike, and the GPS tracked it to the train station. And there was pictures from the train station, and it tracked him to the laundromat on the other side of the tracks. So I sent this picture to Jimmy. Jimmy knew who exactly it was right away. Two weeks after that, he encountered him while he was on patrol. He detained him just through verbal dialogue, hey, how you doing, what's going on, was able to call Suffolk County, was able to call Stony Brook, and they came over and they arrested the individual. So it's working hand in hand with the different agencies that we do, that they do with us. They share information, we share information, and we can get to the bottom of things. Right now, we have two individuals up at the rail, at the Long Island Railroad Station parking lot, that are trying car doors to see if they're open, to see what they can get out of them. So like Officer Muller said, lock your car doors, whether you're out, about, or you're at home, okay? This way, they can't get into your cars. And with that, I'm going to call up Jimmy Mardaco, our chief of patrol. He's going to give you our FAT.
Let's wait for Chief Mardaco to give his report, and then we'll open it up.
Good evening to the board, good evening, Mayor Shepperle. Thank you for the opportunity again. As Chief Owen stated, the Stony Brook Police Department worked hand in hand with Chief Owen. We were able to identify that subject and work on that immediately. I have several run-ins with him, so that was a success on our end to work hand in hand with that department. As of today's date, we have 62 cases on the docket for the next upcoming court date, which is 8/8. 34 of those were quality of life written from this department. Those entail disorderly conducts, which are the high-end statistically of those numbers. Most of them will be open alcohol. Some of the store owners will call us when a problem is starting. Again, I would like to acknowledge the communication between Chief Owen, the mayor, Deputy Chief John Barrero, that we all stay in communication with these certain things that pop up. The FAT is a field appearance ticket that we will write for the next upcoming court date. We try very hard on the plainclothes end to be preventative, not only when something is about to happen, but also be very in communication with the people that own the stores in the area. We're fixated right now up at the rail, and we trickle down during the evening. The aided calls that this unit has been responding to has been on the lower side, which is a very good thing, but I'm very pleased with these numbers, as we have, as of right now, zero complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. I just want to close with what I closed with last year...last month. We're still endeavoring to put out a Facebook page dedicated to the Code Enforcement Bureau. We're going to be working with our social media team to make sure this is done right. Once again, we will be putting out memos, alerts, and whatnot, so if you sign up to it and you want to get an alert about what's going on, or there's an accident on, you know, Main Street somewhere, we'll put that out. This way, you can avoid the area if you're traveling in the area. Also, one thing I've noticed is on these Facebook pages, that complaints are down, or ideas about complaints with the village are down, which is a good thing for everybody involved. People are using different avenues, people are calling, people are walking up to us and reporting what they're seeing and what they're hearing, so which is a good thing. I'd rather have somebody call us or walk up to one of us and report it, other than go through social media with rumors, let's say. So that's a good thing. If you do need to reach out to us, I'm sure most of you have the number, it's 631-774-0066. I also want to share with you another number for non-emergency issues to get Suffolk County PD involved with what we're doing down here. It's 631-852-COPS, C-O-P-S. Anything non-emergency, get them involved, let them know what's going on, because they have, of course, they have the jurisdiction over Port Jeff Village, and they want to know what's going on down here as well. And I just want to close with what I'm hearing a lot is complaints on the street. People coming up to us, hey, this happened, or hey, that happened. And my first question to anybody that has anything to say is, did you call us? And the answer, nine times out of 10, is no. So if something's going on, and it's a concern of yours, and you don't tell us, we don't know what's going on. So please, do not hesitate to call, call the supervisor on duty, which was the phone number I gave you, send an email, or flag somebody down, hey, I saw this, I saw that. This way, we can address the situation, hopefully correct the situation, and we won't have to deal with it anymore. So I'll borrow what the NYPD says. If you see something, say something. Okay, with that...oh, and one final thing. I'll take questions in a minute, but please, if you have a question, please ask it here and not out in the hallway after the meeting, because there might be three or four people that have the same question that are also afraid to ask it. So with that, questions, thoughts, concerns, anybody?
Tracy Donnelly, 2 Stern Drive. So I don't think I was aware that you all carry firearms. Are these village-issued firearms?
We don't all carry firearms.
So the ones that do, are they village-issued, or are they personal?
Personal.
So in the event you had to discharge your weapon, are you covered under the village?
As far as I know, yes.
Like liability?
Yes, as far as I know, yes. Most of us are retired law enforcement.
Right.
So we are what's called HR 218. You can look it up, and we're all authorized to carry, and we're covered under that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm glad that you can protect yourselves, and thank you for all you do to keep us safe. So do you know for a fact that you're covered under the village?
I could definitely...
Dave, can you turn your microphone on, please?
We'll prepare a memo for the mayor's review and court about their use of the firearm in the capacity of the code official. We will prepare that memo.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything? Sir?
Indeed.
Mark Robinson, 27 Thorn Lane. Two things before the question. Congratulations on your hole-in-one, mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And the second thing, the house on the corner of my street with the overgrown hedge is all fixed up. You can even see the road sign. Could we put a speed trap on North Country Road in Thorn Lane?
What do you see going on there?
A lot of fast cars.
Okay, time of day?
You pick the time, and they're going.
Okay. I could definitely add that to the list, absolutely, and I'll step up patrols in the area as well. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Just to shout out Mr. Robinson to the planning department, who the building inspection process worked, and we were...thanks to Mr. Mardaco helped with that, and Rich Harris, Attorney Harrison, we were able to mitigate that based on your feedback at these meetings. So thank you for speaking up, and if something...if someone needs something in the community, that's...let it be known, and it will get addressed.
All right, thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Suzette Smutler, 22 Larita Gate. I was going to pass this time and make a phone call, but if Mark is brave enough to come up, so am I. Whether it's a speed trap or your evaluation, what does one need to do to get your attention? I don't want to go...the traffic that drives east to west on North Country Road, past Larita Gate.
Okay.
You pick the time they're speeding, but now I'm in competition with Mark for evaluation on North Country Road. But if somebody could look into it, my husband just pointed out to me that police could be on, I think you say, a Gaddis, and would see what was going on. I mean, not like you have to have a traffic gun or something. It's pretty obvious that they're speeding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So just a quick follow-up question, Chief Owen. Do you think, and this is conjecture, of course, but anecdotal, but do you think it's possible that the speed trailer on Brook Road is basically deterring people from speeding?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, a speed trailer anywhere is going to deter them, especially if they're a frequent flyer, if someone takes that every time. Now, one thing about these speed cameras is, if you'll notice, if you go over a certain speed, it starts flashing. People don't know if their picture's being taken or not, so they think that their picture's being taken.
And maybe it is.
And it could be. I'm not going to tell you whether it is or not. But it's a deterrent, you know, and especially if someone is, you know, a frequent flyer and is going down that same road, and if someone's using that same road all the time, they're probably a resident, and why wouldn't you want to obey the speed limit in your own neighborhood? I mean, a lot of times, you see signs that say, you know, if your children lived here, you'd obey the speed limit or something to that effect. You know, that's...and 30 miles an hour going down that hill, I think is more than plenty. And I don't think you need much more than that. You can coast down doing 30.
Can you also update...give an update on the presence of the Suffolk County Police detail on Brook Road?
Yes, we have what's called a whiskey unit. You may have noticed them on Thursday, Friday, Saturdays on Main Street. They've been detailed out to Brook Road to sit where the cutout is for the football field. I spoke to our investigator, Matt Davis, who was part of that whiskey unit. The other night, he worked, he pulled over three cars, and it's funny, pulled three, all three were village residents, and all three felt that since they were residents, they were allowed to speed. He gave them all warnings. He was being nice that night. So it's...they're...I've asked him, whenever he's working, if he could go out there, sit out there, irregular intervals, irregular times a day, to help deter, and then if you do see somebody speeding, he's been pulling them over and giving them warnings. So it's been fruitful and effective.
Thank you.
I have something. So this is sort of one of these residents coming up here and saying, hey, this is an issue. I know I'm getting older by the day, but the cars, these backfiring... I, I, I know I'm getting older by the day, but the, the cars, the, these backfiring exhaust systems seem to be getting louder.
Okay.
As, as the years have gone on, myself, my neighbors on Main Street, but really anyone who lives near any ma, major roadway in the village, especially with a hill, will, will hear what sounds like gunshots.
Right.
Which is a quality of life issue, very concerning. So it's not your muscle car, your kind of loud motorcycle, it's these, I'm sure people in the room have, have heard, it sounds like a, either a machine gun or a pop, pop, pop.
Right, right.
And so I know that there was a, an effort that had started with, internally with code to have a code officer set up at one point with a decibel meter, and then if that vehicle happened to stop, then a, some, you know, a, a, a VT or, you know, something might be issued to that, that vehicle driver. I know that these are illegal, so I don't know with having Suffolk PD here.
It's, it would probably be something that we would have to coordinate with Suffolk PD since we do not do car stops.
Sure.
We are not trained, or most of us aren't trained to do car stops. So it would be something that we would have to work, figure out what time, most probably most on the weekend.
I think the whiskey unit sounds like a mismatch.
Yes, yes. I could dispatch them to the area and see what they have available to help us out with that.
True.
And we could start on Main and work away from there. But absolutely, I'll, I'll bring it to their attention and have them take care of it.
I appreciate that. I, I can speak for myself in my home at, you know, 11:00 PM.
Right.
That, that up and down straightaway is like a, it's the Port Jefferson 500.
Right.
But I encourage residents too to email in or, or speak up.
Absolutely.
If they have other, other places that they're experiencing this.
Anyone else, anything?
Virginia Capeon, 11 Overton Avenue. Congratulations, Mayor Sheprow, and thank you for your service, Board of Trustees, and congratulations to Drew Viondo and Bob Giuliano. It's, it's an exciting time, I think, for, for this village. I want to echo what Rebecca was talking about. I live in Upper Port.
Okay.
And I, I, part of me, if I had time, I would sit out there because I, it's the same sound every night at about 5:00 PM. It's like they get off work and they decide they're going to make their little strange noises. I don't have time to do that. So some, and I know we can't write moving violations.
Right, right.
But some kind of, you know, maybe I should be calling, and, and I take your advice to heart now because when I hear it, I probably need to call. So I, I'm going to try harder, but it, it is really getting very loud with the hot rods, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, just to make a point, if you call, that's a statistic.
Exactly.
So you keep statistics to understand the trends of the issues.
That's right.
So it's helpful.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Chief, in, in the last week on CBS Radio, and I neglected to do the research, but the village of Greenberg, I think it is, in upstate, the mayor was on the radio speaking about this very issue and the fact that they were deploying sound cameras. That's a big step to take, and I don't know, I don't know legality of a village doing it, but I was surprised to learn there is such a thing.
I, to, to...
A tool for the toolbox, maybe, but I don't know if that would be a very good idea as a public relations kind of situation.
To piggyback off what you're saying, I did 20 years New York City Police Department. We had something called a Shot Spotter.
Right.
It basically was a sound device that could pinpoint where a gunshot came from. So it's along the technical lines of that, where it would go and, go and, it goes into a computer system and it maps out exactly where that sound is coming from. But yes, I understand what you're saying.
But even, you know, maybe something similar to a speed trailer, a sound, a sound, a sign that showed if you were exceeding a certain decibel level, if people were aware of it, maybe they, they would be tying to their neighbors.
Sure, okay. Anybody else, anything, anything? No, okay.
Thank you. Just an extra shout out to Suffolk County Police and Officer Muller, who's here tonight. We really appreciate your support in our community, and we, we're just so grateful to see you out and about and working with our, our code officers to accelerate and, and effecate the, you know, the duties of your office. So thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
And, and, nice. Now, I'd like to...
You can leave it on.
You can leave it on. We have one more special guest today. His name is Michael Presta. He's the deputy chief of the Port Jefferson, well, he can name the official entity, the agency that he represents. It's Port Jefferson, Mount Sinai, and Belter, I believe, those, those territories. And he is giving report today about the work of our emergency medical service response team. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Port Jefferson EMS. So it's been some time since Port Jefferson EMS had really had any public-facing time in a village meeting. I met with Mayor Sheprow last week, about two weeks ago, and thought it'd be great for us to come here, kind of give a little brief background about our organization, what we do in the community, and then after tonight, moving forward, maybe provide some statistics and just some information about our response in the village and what we do. So I'm going to move forward. I have a brief presentation. Unfortunately, I don't have a way to display it, but I have it on my phone. I'm just going to be reading off it, so my apologies for looking down at the screen. And I'll be happy to answer any questions after. So a little bit about Port Jefferson EMS. We were formed back in 1959. I believe we were originally part of the fire department prior to 1959, and then for whatever reason, I wasn't around then, they decided to split. We provide 911 emergency ambulance service to the village of Port Jefferson since then, Belter, Mount Sinai. We are a 911 and BLS inter-facility organization. So we, when you pick up the phone and call 911, you'll see a Port Jefferson paramedic and a Port Jefferson ambulance. We also do some non-emergency transportation from our local community hospitals and nursing facilities. What makes us interesting is we're a combination service. We're comprised of career and volunteer members. We're about 150 members large, largely volunteers, but the paramedics are our career providers and the management of Port Jefferson EMS is career management. So what do we do, right? Obviously, you call 911, you'll see a Port Jefferson ambulance, but we're a lot more than just a 911 ambulance service. We do education and training. We do special oper, special operations. We have events in the village and technical rescue response. We have a K-9. We have a great tight bond with the university and the university students at our building that I'll talk about in just a moment. We answer about 3,500 calls per year, which is, we've grown significantly since I've been around. I've been working for Port Jefferson EMS since about 2007, where we answered under 1,000 calls per year. And it was a big deal when we broke 1,000 calls. So now in 2023, it's about 3,500 calls per year. We operate 12 ambulance tours per day, so there's 12 ambulance shifts comprised of two volunteer EMTs. About two to four ambulances on at any given time, depending on our historical need for ambulance service. You know, overnight, we kind of go to go down, and during the day, we ramp up a little bit with service. That's about 52,560 volunteer hours that we generate per year with our members of our organization, and about $1.3 million in savings per year to the community because of the volunteer labor that we leverage. As far as the career side of the organization, we have one 24/7 paramedic that rides around in a first responder vehicle, and one supervisor that oversees all the ambulances, the paramedic, and basically the operations of the organization. I want to talk briefly about our live-in program, which is something unique that we do at Port Jefferson EMS. So because we have such a tight relationship with the university, we actually provide free room and board for about 15 Stony Brook University students in exchange for volunteerism. So they start when they're freshmen or sophomore. We bring them into our building, we train them to become EMTs, and they ride the ambulance about 24-hour weeks, which is great for us and the community, and it's also great for the students as well because they're looking to generate clinical hours as they move on to med school, PA school, nursing school. So it's really something special that I'm not aware of anybody else downstate, and there may be one program upstate in New York that does, and it's really been an overwhelming success for the past number of years. The livins themselves do about 18,000 to 19,000 hours of volunteer time in the community. And it saves them about $13,000 a year in room and board expenses as well, which is, if you're not aware, the most expensive portion of their college tuition. As far as education, we operate an EMS training academy. So we have all these volunteers, about 135 EMT volunteers. We have to make them EMTs. We run an EMS academy out of our building, a New York State DOA-certified EMS training academy. So we teach about 160 to 180 EMT students per year in about seven classes. We teach everything. We teach Stop the Bleed, CPR, we do community programs, Narcan training. We'll come places and do training on the road. We do training for the school districts. We're, we're out and about, and that's really a big piece of what we do on top of responding to 911 calls. In our special operations section, we do, we have an MCI unit, Mass Casualty Incident Unit, to, to respond to any mass casualty events that may happen or could possibly happen. We have a rescue paramedic program where we teach paramedics how to provide advanced life support, paramedic-level care, and technical rescue environments. So if somebody was trapped in a confined space, or up on a tower, or in the bilge of a boat, and, you know, trapped at a power plant, any of those things, we'll be able to access them and provide patient care in those scenarios. We have a joint technical rescue team with the Port Jefferson Fire Department, who, which we have a great working relationship with. And all of our paramedics are trained in active assailant response, so any sort of active shooter, our paramedics are trained and have ballistic armor and are able to respond and provide care in a high-threat environment. A little bit about our transfer truck. We have a transfer truck staff with two EMTs, Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. What that transfer truck does is takes patients home from the hospital to the nursing home, or from the hospital to their home residence after discharge of the hospital. That transfer truck is supported primarily with insurance company billing from those patients as they get discharged from the hospital. But the real beauty of that transfer truck is that when it's not providing those inter-facility calls, it's another ambulance provided free of charge into the village to provide 911 response. So it's kind of a unique way, we found a way to provide extended service. Sorry, my phone's shut off. Another unique thing we do at Port Jefferson EMS, you can see I have this dog here with me, it's Huckleberry, or Huck, I can't say Huckleberry all the time. About two years ago, we had reached out to CCI K-9 Companions, and they're located in Medford, and applied as a grant program to see if we can get a service dog to help us work with patients and victims that suffer trauma. Huck works with us, works with us in the hospital, he's in the school systems, he acts as part of the Suffolk County Critical Incident Stress Management Program. So any sort of major incident that happens in the county, where there's a critical incident, debriefing for firefighters, law enforcement, and medical personnel, Huck is there for that debriefing and kind of functions as an icebreaker and creates an environment that's welcome to kind of decompress after a high-stress incident. That's really the basics of what we do at Port Jefferson EMS. I wanted to take tonight, really just to start from the beginning and kind of talk about how we operate and what we do in the community. Going forward, I'd like to share some just statistics about calls we do, types of calls. Just mind you, we have to be careful about federal, federal privacy laws, so we can't really give specifics about what happened at Mrs. Jones's house, or this address, or that address, but just a basic overview of kind of how we respond in the village and when we respond. So thank you very much for having me. Thank you, Mayor Sheprow, for working with us on this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Listen, Jean Ollet, 23 Marocay Trail. Thank you very much. As a resident, I actually wasn't aware of most of this information, so thank you for what you do. Thank you, Huck.
Absolutely.
Actually, as a resident, I have a question.
Sure.
Does our, do you offer CPR classes to residents in, in Heimlich?
Do, yeah.
As a resident, I actually don't know.
Every month, we provide a free community CPR class for really anybody that'll sign up, especially village residents. It's offered at our building on a Monday night. If you go to our website, PJEMS.org, and follow the links for education and training, you can find out how to sign up for that.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do.
No problem.
And thank you for the volunteer service.
Greetings. Maybe you can help me out?
Sure.
I have like a two-part question. You're located at...
May, can you identify yourself and your address?
Bruce Miller, 109 Scraggy Hill Road.
We know.
Port Jefferson.
Good evening.
You're located at Crystal Brook Hollow Road, correct?
Correct. 25 Crystal Brook Hollow.
Okay, so maybe somebody can help me out because we had discussions with your office, not with you, several years back, and they were double-charging. In other words, the village, which I assume is still paying to have village residents taken to hospitals and things of this nature, that service was being paid for by the village, but they were also billing individuals and insurance companies. And we had this conversation, and, and they refused to back away from that. And the last I heard, we were leaving this Port Jefferson EMS in, on Crystal Brook Hollow Road, and moving towards the Brookhaven Town group. So I was wondering if anybody could give me an update?
So yeah, I could, I could definitely clarify that. So a number of years ago, and don't quote me all in the spot, but I believe it was three or four years ago, Port Jefferson EMS used to contract with the village of Belter, the village of Port Jefferson, and the town of Brookhaven, and they were all in different fiscal years, and it was very challenging for the organization to hit, to work on contracts. So a number of years ago, both villages, Belter and, and Port Jefferson got together and decided to redraw the district line. So now it's called the Tri-Harbor Ambulance District. I have no idea where that name came from, so I'm sorry, I can't ask, answer that. But now it's been redrawn, so now we're a taxing district that overlays in the town of Brookhaven, and it's on your tax bill. The ambulance service does bill. That's a billing program administered by the town of Brookhaven. I can answer like very basic questions on it, but it's really best directed to the town and the town council people.
But we're also paying you. I mean, my issue is double billing. Are we still...
So it's not necessarily double billing. I mean, so ambulance billing doesn't really pay for the readiness cost of EMS. EMS has a very high readiness, readiness cost, even if the ambulance doesn't go anywhere. It costs a lot of money to get insurance and lighting and building and vehicles and fuel and all that stuff like that. The ambulance transport bill pays for that specific incident, and it goes to the insurance company, doesn't go to the individual patient.
Yes, there's a lot of services that you provide and personnel, but that's from tax money, correct?
We are 100% municipally funded.
But people being transported from their home on an emergency basis, are we, are you, are you still...
Their insurance company would receive a bill. Yeah. And then just to further explain it, the Port Jefferson EMS does not have a relationship with a collections agency or anything like that, so we send a bill, we have to make a reasonable attempt to try and collect it, but that doesn't involve a collections agency or anything like that.
All right. So, so maybe someone can provide an answer as to whether we are paying for this service. Again, the issue is double billing. I don't want an answer right now, but it's...
Okay. So we'll look into it, Bruce, maybe, some help. Okay. There's one question I have for you.
Sure.
And that is, did you, you talked about the relationship with Stony Brook.
Yes.
What I'd like you to do is talk about why that is special to Port Jefferson EMS, and why and how you were able to negotiate that so that students weren't discontinued as volunteers while they went back home during the summer break or the December break.
Sure. So when I started back in Port Jefferson Ambulance in about 2007, it's, it's struggling. It's struggling to get volunteers, anybody. A lot of people today in 2023 don't have time to volunteer in their weeknights. A lot of people are working two jobs. Very difficult to contribute in that way, way in your community. So Port Jeff EMS had this interesting idea, let's work symbiotically with the population of Stony Brook University, because they need these clinical hours to move on to their medical programs, PA programs, nursing programs, respiratory therapy, any allied health. So we actually changed the structure of the organization to allow them to work with students better. Historically, if a student would join organization back in 2008, 2009, and they went home for summer break, because of the rules of the organization, we would throw them out and say, well, you haven't been here in two months. the organization to allow them to work with students better. Historically, if a student would join organization back in 2008, 2009, and they went home for summer break, because of the rules of organization, we would throw them out. And say, well, you haven't been here in two months. You can't really remain a member. So the organization went and redrafted their bylaws, a lot of their rules and procedures, to create a membership that, that was focused on students, and allowed them to go home on breaks, and be home when school's not in session, but catered to them and let them ride shifts when school is here. And it works out great for us. Eighty percent of our members, ninety percent of our members, are Stony Brook University students who we train to become EMTs. When you're a freshman college student that wants to be a physician, and you have to go volunteer and get clinical hours, you don't have a lot of clinical training at that point in your career. So what do you do? So we take you in off the street with zero training, make you an EMT, train you, onboard you, and give you a place, place to get those clinical hours. And that's through that relationship at Stony Brook University. I would say all of our college student members, all but a couple, are Stony Brook University students. And our live-in program is wholly staffed by Stony Brook University students.
And how many clinical hours do they need?
It varies by program, but it's pushing almost 2,000 clinical hours to apply for some of these programs. So they don't really have a place to get them. It's very difficult. And there's a lot, there's a different experience of, you can go to the emergency department, and they won't let you do anything with any, if you don't have any sort of training. So they'll let you push stretchers, and fluff pillows, and stuff like that. But if you really want hands-on clinical experience, you have to have some sort of certification and some sort of training, and that's what we provide.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. And, oh, do you have a question?
No, there's-
Oh, okay.
75 Winwood Court, south of the Highlands. Thank you for what you do.
No, no problem.
As an EMT for nine years, and you do sacrifice your family life at the same time. So I do thank you. My question to you is, do you have a junior program?
So we used to have a junior program. We do not. And what actually changed that for us is New York State lowered the age to become credentialed as an EMT from eighteen to seventeen. So you can actually take an EMT class when you're sixteen years old, as long as you turn seventeen, when it's time to take your certification exam, and then you can volunteer as a seventeen-year-old. So at that point, we kinda did away with the junior program. It became a little difficult to manage. I believe the latest iteration of it is that if you were a, an adult, and your son or daughter wants to volunteer, you can kinda co-join together. So you have some supervision from your parent while you're there, but we don't have a, a method for, you know, fourteen or fifteen-year-olds to come off the street and kinda ride. Great question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Also, wanna mention that we'll be inviting Port Jeff Fire Department to make a, a similar presentation in the coming weeks. So we have that to look forward to. Now, I'd like to open up the meeting to our, uh, public comment section. So we welcome public comments, and I look to Melissa Gianola first. Come on up.
Melissa Gianola, 23, Marocchi Trail. Good evening, Mayor Shepro, and members of our Board of Trustees. I'm here tonight to request that Marocchi Trail be placed on DPW's list of streets requiring end-to-end curb-to-curb repaving from House Number One to Thirty-Five. I contacted DPW to understand what the process was to fill out paperwork to have our street repaved, and they advised me to attend tonight, and that I had to speak to the mayor's office and our board to approve the list and to attend this meeting to put in the request. I've lived on Marocchi since 2003, and I've watched our street consistently be ripped up by utilities with temporary or no pothole fill-in, where I've had to log onto the portal or send an email to request repairs. At this point, our street has degradation of potholes, varying levels of grading due to multiple patchworks that can twist an ankle. Our street is also covered in blue, yellow, pink, and orange spray paint from local, regional, and national utilities, rendering our road graffiti-filled without recent year's work to even warrant those markings anymore. There's cracks in the street with grass growing, and the recent seal coating of cracks has rendered our street a dizzying maze of scribbled lines that, due to the heat, they've now buckled, folded over itself, ripped away, and it's littering our street with balls of seal coat. I'd like to know if our village has a record of when Marocchi was last paved end-to-end, and I no longer wish for temporary fill-ins of varying pothole repairs when I call in. My intention of speaking tonight is to request that this is documented, Marocchi Trail be inspected, approved, and an ETA for full repaving of our street, and how far in advance we would receive word and approval so the residents can ensure that the vehicles would not be parked on the street ahead of a full repave. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We will follow up with that.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Shepro, board, everybody. Um, make sure this is on. Um, my name is Drew Sora, and I'm at Two Stern Drive. I still haven't gotten the hang of that. Thank you. Um, I'm up here today because I wanna share my thoughts about the recent events regarding your response to the endorsement by Martin Burton on the Sotoket Patriots page, which has, which has been regularly known to post LGBTQ plus hate speech. I'm just gonna give very short background. On July 10th, at the Board of Trustee meetings, I asked Mayor Shepro directly if she would denounce the endorsement by the Sotoket Patriots. I was told that she would think about it and get back to me. A few days after the board meeting, I reached out to see if she had enough time to reflect on what I said. Three weeks went by, and I sent a follow-up email. That same day I sent the follow-up, I received a response that I must admit was disappointing. Mayor Shepro's apology came across as insincere to me. She expressed regret that I felt the way that I did, but did not take responsibility for the lack of communication. Moreover, she defended the Sotoket Patriots post by referring to their freedom of speech and First Amendment rights. I just wanna be clear to everyone, in case I didn't make myself clear. This issue has never been about denying anybody's free speech. It's about a public official's responsibility to use the platform to denounce hate speech and protect marginalized groups. Freedom of speech is a fundamental right to all of us here in America, but it should not be used to justify or ignore hateful rhetoric aimed at specific groups in our community. Port Jefferson is a vibrant community that we all love. Our strength lies in the differences that we have, and we all have a shared commitment to treating everyone with respect and dignity. I believe we deserve, we deserve a village leadership that is proactive in addressing these issues, and one that responds properly and sincerely to concerns that are raised by the constituents. I really hope what I said tonight can lead to a public statement that better aligns with the views of village residents. But I also wanna thank Ms. Gordon and Ms. Ransom for offering me the ability, after last board meeting, to be included in their peace group, which regularly protests against the Sotoket Patriots. And I also wanted to thank Deputy Mayor Casse and Trustee Biondo for approaching me after last meeting to thank me for speaking out and being engaged. The support means a lot to me. And I also wanted to add on that, um, what they said at the, um, code meeting about the loud mufflers, what you brought up Deputy Mayor Casse, I completely agree with. And actually louder muffler cars, when their catalytic converters are removed or altered, it really increases vehicle emissions. And I'm really worried about that, because they're very frequent here, and the gases that they release, such as nitrous and sulfur oxides, can be really dangerous to the lungs of the people who are around those cars on the streets and everything. So, thank you for bringing that up. I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. So I just wanna read my statement that I sent to you. Um, you characterize it in a way that I don't necessarily agree with, but I'll, I'll read the statement and let it speak for itself. But, um, it's not a back and forth. I'll just read the statement into the record so that, um, it's, it's not a dialogue. So-
I just wanna listen.
Okay. I said, "Dear Drew, experiencing diverse perspectives is an essential component of a truly enriched experience and critical to the social fiber of a community. Your engagement in this important, timely conversation is to be commended. As an independent thinker and mayor of Port Jefferson, I embrace the constitutional freedom of speech and thought, whether I fundamentally agree or fundamentally disagree with a particular view. I also respect the rights of our residents, employees, and board members to express themselves through constitutionally protected freedom of expression in an environment that encourages, rather than discourages, civil discourse. I very much regret to hear that you felt ignored. I hope this response to your expressed issues rectifies these feelings. Be well." Lauren.
Thank you, Mayor Shepro.
You're welcome. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak publicly during the public comment section of the meeting?
Tracy Donnelly, Two Stern Drive. Um, I just wanted to follow up on the comment that I made at the, I think it was the July 10th meeting, maybe, about the committees, and the ability to join committees or be part of them. So we, I actually did send an email to all of the trustees and to you with a copy of the resume, and then I was told, and I think I heard it at the last meeting, that Deputy Mayor Casse had turned in, I don't, please correct me, 'cause I'm trying to, we could barely hear in the beginning. We can hear much better today, though. Um, that the committees have charters, and, and you're prepared to start thinking about how those committees will be staffed, or have people involved. And then, um, I think you had stated that there's actually a community member now that's helping with that, or that will be, um, so can we have the name of that community member so that we know who to work with, or is there a timeframe on when people will be assigned to committees, or when we'll have an opportunity to know which committees you actually wanna have? Because I'm not sure if you're gonna, I think you're gonna be adding some or removing some. And do you have any timeline on when that is, and how we can go through the process? Because-
Sure, sure. So, thank you. Are you, are you finished with your question? I don't wanna interrupt.
I don't, it'll depend on your answer, I think. So-
So for the first part, part one?
Thanks.
Okay. An answer to part one, and, and Trustee Casse, you can add on if you, if you feel like I've missed anything. Right now, what we're doing, because, uh, we're so inundated with just, uh, transition and acclimating to the office, uh, and learning everything we possibly can about how, and how the village has been operating and is operating, and, and connecting dots and all. We are, uh, asking people who are interested in volunteering, uh, to submit their information to the clerk's office, to Clerk Perillo, which will, will help, uh, it'll help us in our collection, uh, process, and to be able to go back to those, uh, those letters, those of interest, and that, um, those, that expressed interest, when we are ready to start, um, populating, uh, the website with the, the boards and committees that we're sort of recruiting for. So, uh, Trustee Casse has started, um, creating a document that will, uh, continue to be, um, filled in, fleshed out, to be comprehensive and informative, to help people understand what committees do, what their mission is, what the vision is for the committees. And if it's a committee that is codified in code, that we're accurate and point residents to the code that has established the committee, or the board, or the council, whatever it may be. Um, and, uh, but for now, we just really appreciate, and we have gotten a lot of people expressing interest in participating in government. So we're very grateful for that. Um, it's, it's music to, to my ears, and I think to everyone's ears here, that people wanna get involved. And, uh, it's exactly what, um, we were hoping for. So, uh, in response to what you're asking is, we'll have it done. I, I probably shouldn't have spoken publicly that there's a person who's gonna be working on that. I, I haven't, uh, really finalized that, that discussion, so it's premature to announce anyone's name in that regard. But, um, we're, we're working on it. And we are, we welcome and appreciate anybody's, uh, inquiry and, and volunteerism for what, what we're doing now. And there are a lot of activities that are already posted to the website boards, things that are established in code. And, um, I think in the last, the organizational, um, meeting agenda, the committees' boards' listing was included on that agenda. So if, um, that should be on the website in our minutes, um, and people can refer to that. If there's something that interests them immediately, that's there for their, uh, awareness. And, um, if I, I've forgotten anything?
Hang on to that. I, I know we each have residents who reach out to us because we're-
My, my-
Oh, the light screen.
Maybe just push it a little closer.
Testing. Kevin, do you have me turned way down over there?
I see you.
All right. So, um, we, we're all in this community, and we all have residents who know us from the country club, or walking around town, or business, whatever it is. And so we all have residents who will email us and say, hey, you know, we, we're interested in getting involved. And so I know, I've received those emails, I'm sure others have, and we're forwarding them on to Clerk Perillo. Um, and since we've been having this discussion about, uh, potential new committees and boards, and, and, uh, looking at the positions in existing committees, I have heard from residents who I have not met, which is so energizing and so incredible, that we have these talented, uh, people in the village here who want to use their skillset and their time to make this place a better place to live and call home. And so I do, uh, really encourage, um, you know, whether it's one of the Board of Trustees, if that's most comfortable, or directly to Clerk Perillo, um, to send in a letter of interest of sorts. Your general, uh, you know, interest, is it, is it golf in the country club? Is it the environment? Uh, is it, um, you know, planning and zoning? Uh, all of those skillsets have a place in the village here. I'm very excited to get to the point where we can have a board discussion about all of these opportunities, finalize those, um, and get them, uh, get them populated, because, uh, I, I just see the energy coming from the community, and, uh, want to harness that, and put it into the residents' hands to start, uh, working on all of these village, uh, issues, and, you know, issues in a, in a positive and productive sense. So-
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So, as a follow-up, or when you list the committees, and I think what you were saying, Mayor Shepro, like the charters, sort of what the mission is, or what they're expected to do, will there be a list of the qualifications you should have to be part of these committees? And are these committees voluntary, or do you need to be appointed? Would you be distinguishing the difference, so us as residents know which ones we need to get appointed to, versus which ones we can just volunteer for? So, um, I appreciated at the, I went to the Parks and Recreation Meeting, and I appreciated you stating that there was actually a vacant seat on that committee. How, so some of them you just volunteer for, and, and it gets decided, and others you have to be appointed for. Will there be a distinction in these committees with a list of required qualifications, so we can know if we're qualified to be part of them or not, and how we best fit?
So I'll let, I'll ask, uh, our attorney to kinda address that. I'll address it, just based on what I know. I know there are, uh, appointments required. Um, and at the, it's a mayoral, some are mayoral appointments with, uh, that must be approved by the board.
Right.
Uh, and others are, uh, volunteers, but also, I mean, I look at the Six Acre Park Committee, and I think that's an appointment committee. It's not a, it's not in code. Um, but, you know, I mean, it, it differs depending on, and Mr. Moran, if you have any-
Yeah, Mayor, I think you're right on point. Um, it would depend on a different charge of the committee. If it, if it's located in, in our code book, you know, and it's a committee appointed via appointment of this board, then obviously that's how that would be. If the power is, is vested in, just to bring up a Parks and Recreations Commission, if the Parks Commission has the authority to form a committee for a particular purpose, you would think that in government, any, any formation or any use of, of an, have someone act or comment on behalf of the village would be some appointment process by the board, or at least vetted through the board, um, unless there's a charter otherwise. So again, to answer a specific question or a vac, vacuum about a specific committee, we'd have to look into how that committee was formed, when it was formed, what the purpose of that formation was, and who the appointing authority is.
Thank you for that.
And many, many of these, uh, appointments come in and, you know, take an oath of office when they are appointed. So they're codified, and, and as, as Attorney Moran said, it is an official, you know, they're, they're speaking on behalf of, they've taken the oath of office. My understanding is that, that is, so they are known to have to uphold the law of the village.
Yeah, of course. And are they appointed by you, or is it a board decision? Is there a process?
I think we're going in circles now. It, it depends on the committee. Like, if, if, if the Port Jefferson has a beautification committee, and they meet on Saturday mornings, and anyone can come, okay, then that's, that's how that committee is run. So in order to , to, to answer whether or not, you know, it needs to be appointed, or it needs to be from the board, I guess, again, it depends on the committee, and the charge of that committee, and how it is formed, and what its purpose is. Not every, not every board, I mean, sorry, not every commission can bind the village, make only recommendations to the village, and therefore may not need an oath of office. But it depends on that particular committee. I, I don't know how else to say it, except it depends-
I appreciate, I'm just saying, we would know that difference, though. So when you've listened-
We'd have to find out, like you said, if it's in fact the Parks and Recreation Committee, the first step would, would be, how was it formed? When was it formed? What purpose was it formed for? Did that change? You know, what, what's the purpose of it? You know, all of those things should be codified somewhere. And if not, I would submit, then it would default to an appointment of the board.
And, and Parks and Rec is in the code. So-
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just gonna follow up on the qualifications, uh, question. Uh, I've, I've not seen in my tenure here any sort of particular subset of, you know, must have a four-year college degree, or, you know, any, anything like this. But, um, uh, you know, we've been discussing how, how are appointments, um, selected? You know, how is one individual selected over another? And, um, having CVs and having letters of interest, uh, to, to, for individuals to say, you know, this is, this is the expertise that I'm bringing to the table. And the, the Board of Trustees being able to look at a board or a committee and say, okay, you know, that we don't have someone who's worked with, uh, youth before, but maybe that would be something that's strong to add. So, you know, that's, that's maybe someone that the board would be favorable. That's an, a, an abstract example. Um, but, you know, it's, it, by, by having residents show us who they are and what they wanna bring to the table, that makes, uh, and for me, as a trustee, I can speak for myself, that makes it, uh, clearer to see, you know, who would, um, you know, who's the best to volunteer and serve. And should we be in a position where we have so many people who wanna volunteer, and not enough, uh, positions to appoint? I think we're doing- I think we're doing really well as a, as a village.
Thank you. And last question, I promise. Will, can you suggest boards if you're a community member? Like, can you, because I don't remember seeing anything around a youth board or a youth committee, which I think we've had in the past, so is that, is there an opportunity for us to submit ideas we have for potential boards or committees for your discretion? I mean, not that you have to say yes, but we have an opportunity to do that? Is that...
I think residents always have the opportunity to make suggestions for the village.
Love it. Yep. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. If there are no further public comments, I would like to invite up our general manager from the Port Jefferson Country Club, Mr. Tom Natola, who will give a report of what's happening in the height of the season up there in Harbor, in the Harbor Hills area.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, trustees. On the membership side, we have 591 total memberships. That's one less than last year. There's 639 members of that 591 memberships. We sold 33 nine-hole passes. We sold nine 18-hole passes. Currently on the membership side, working for our next fiscal year, we're looking at classifications of membership, dues structure, cart fees, guest fees, tournament fees. We want to be fair in the market. We don't want to be the cheapest, but we don't also want to be the most expensive either. So we're trying, we're going to look at it and compare, and bring to the board what we think is fair and reasonable. Rounds played is another thing. We are so busy, it's not even funny. Most golf courses will average about 20, our size, private clubs, will average somewhere around 21,000 to 23,000 rounds of golf a year. Through yesterday, we're 18,300 rounds. We're averaging over 5,000 rounds a month. So to put that in easy way to understand it, we run tee times every 10 minutes, starting at seven o'clock in the morning till 3:15 in the afternoon. Every 10, 10 minutes, there's a foursome going off the first tee, seven days a week, every single week. That leads to a couple of issues. Compaction from all the traffic, from carts and people trafficking around the golf course, and being able to do maintenance, cutting grass, raking traps, anything that involves basic maintenance on the golf course is very hard to accomplish. With that, we are also seeing some issues with our well and our allotment of water, time that we can have watering. So we are limited by DEC on the amount of water we can pull out of the aquifer. With that, if we, breaking it backwards to make it easy for everyone to understand, we have 1,100 sprinkler heads on the golf course. With the current water restrictions, we're able to run four heads at a time, so it takes 11 and three-quarter hours to completely water the golf course, and by the time that's finished, we have to start all over again. So our water system is constantly, constantly running. So I actually am meeting with well companies tomorrow morning to see what we can do about fixing that if we can. Let's see. I did that? Okay. Financials for the fiscal year, 531-23 ending. We were at, the expenses were at $2,622,000, or $323,785,000 over budget. Revenues were $3,5,829,000, or $708,000 over budget, meaning we put back into the balance approximately 387, into the fund balance, $387,000. That fund balance is used for capital projects on the golf course. Our bunkers haven't been restored in 15 years. The normal life of a bunker is eight to 10 years. Cart paths haven't been redone in 20-plus years. The normal life expectancy of a cart path on the golf course is 10 years. With the amount of play, they're deteriorating in front of us. And then we also have to resolve our water issue. So that fund balance, as much as it sound like there's a lot of money in that balance, it goes out just as fast in capital projects on the golf course to keep up for the amount of play. Our checking account balance as of 8/1 was $12,098. Our savings account balance was $1,588,000. A lot of that dues money comes in at the beginning of the year and funds our operational expenses through the year to get through to our next due cycle, which will start January 1st. Both dues and expenses were increased in this year's fiscal budget by $500,000. Revenues were increased with the amount of membership, and the volume of membership, and the use of the golf course. Expenses were to give the services that a private country club expects, a member of a private country club would expect. We're working on paddle design for the facilities. Once the Phase 2 is completed, we're going to be redoing the paddle facility, adding hardwood tennis courts back and pickle courts back. The number of both, we have not decided on yet, because it depends on where the wall is going and how much space we actually have, but we are bringing back paddle facilities. Our partner, the TPG partner, which handles all our food and beverage operations at the club, they have brought in a new person. She came from Nessawqua Country Club. Charlotte's been doing a bang-up job in the months she's been there. She's totally turned things around. We're seeing much more activity, much more creativity, and the membership is happy. The comments from the members are, it's finally starting to feel like a country club. That's it. That's all I got.
Any questions for Tom? I just want to apologize, because I'm probably, you know, 50% responsible for the sand coming out of the sand traps.
It's not only sand, it's rocks that just coming up.
I know. I know.
We have members that bring cups of rocks to us.
Yeah.
And what would you like us to do with these?
Yeah.
I feel like the whole of the show tonight, sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
The G and O 23 Marokey. I'm sorry, can you repeat what the plans are, or what you think the plans might be for the tennis, or for pickleball?
So we, we're the, we had eight hardwood courts previously.
Yes.
Obviously, with the construction of the wall, we have to move some of those courts, because the wall will be in place. So we're working with Gold Coast Tennis right now, and they're drawing designs for us that we'll use for an RFP once we're ready to go, to add four lower courts, possibly three upper courts, and seven tennis courts, and six pickle courts.
Okay. As a parent of a competitive tennis player, what are the plans, once that's completed, for administering the pros? Are we going to be keeping our pros? Are we looking to contract out? Are we keeping it in-house? I know a lot of our members are out in another facility right now.
We're going to keep it in-house. Alex, I'm hoping, and I've spoken with Alex, who'll come back to head up the program, and run it from there forward.
Perfect. Great. Thank you so much.
Oh, and if you have any of the tennis balls that fell down your pants, or you might...
They're over in Bridgeport right now, because of the tide.
Thank you, Mr. Natola.
One more question.
So, do you have a question, Mr. Natola?
No, it was a question from the board.
Sure. Come on up.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say one more thing. Unfortunately, since what you told me last time and tonight, that I know, I'm aware that this is not a back-and-forth between residents and the mayor and the Board of Trustees, I wanted to let you know personally that I do plan to follow up on what I said tonight in a different setting, where I will be able to have a back-and-forth conversation that I feel would better be fair to what I have to say, and what I, what concerns I have for the village, because I live here and I'm really concerned with what I'm hearing. So I just wanted to let you know that personally, before the public comments section ended. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The public comments section has ended, but thank you. Okay. All right. So off the agenda, we're going to ask Kevin Wood, our municipal parking administrator, to come up and discuss the passport program. Give us an update.
I'm going to address both the residents and the board at this time. My name is Kevin Wood. I am the proud parking and mobility administrator at the Village of Port Jefferson. I'm going to generally update the board and the residents about our passport program, which is a micro-mobility transportation program. I feel like I need to give a little bit of a history of what we've had in the past, since I've been here in 2017. I've managed something called a jitney. You might remember the red bus that went around town to five or six different stops. And subsequently, I wasn't involved, but I also remember the bid had an electric car program. So those were two of the transportation programs we've had in place. Last year, we decided, or the beginning of this year, we decided to institute something called Passport, which is a micro-mobility program, meaning it's on-demand. Basically, think of it as our own Uber service for residents. That started in April, and it ran up until today, so I'm here to report, we're at the three-month mark, and we would be up for renewal for the two vendors we use to make this possible, which is a software vendor and a company that actually drives people around, the hardware vendor, if you will. Both were married together perfectly. I'm extremely happy with the technology we put together, the efficiency, and the feedback we've gotten. I'm here to report that the use of this passport is below our expectations. For whatever reason, we can talk about that probably for the next hour, but we're seeing very low usage overall for residents at this point. So I bring this to the board in the hopes that we can discuss further what the future of this would be after the six-months program is finished, which is the minimum, minimum of six months. We're seeing, we're seeing somewhere between two and 12 rides per weekend, well below my expectation. I have some ideas on, as to why, but, you know, let me know if you want to discuss that, or just lay out the facts.
Sure. I, I, I don't have, you're, what you're recommending is that we go for three more months to see if it changes, or did I hear that wrong?
No, September 30th would be the end of six months.
Okay.
And we have a 30-day out with both vendors.
Okay. So you're, okay, so you're recommending that we...
Yeah, without drastic changes, by the way, we've done a lot of promotion. Some would say maybe too mu, too much promotion, but we've done newspaper ads. I happen to think that residents just either make their way down here with cars, and, and that's that. The pricing is spectacular, $2.50 per person, so we can make that conjecture all day long, but I'm here to report that it is below our department's expectations, and, you know, I care about the dollars and cents that are going out, just like everybody else does, but I will say this program was paid for wholly by the parking department at this point, not by the taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Any, any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, what were the expectations? What did you anticipate?
I would have liked two to four per hour, two to four trips per hour. I'm not seeing that. I really thought we would have that. Now, we are running 4:00 PM to 12:00 midnight, Friday and Saturday. That's where we started. There has been talk about using the service for maybe a senior program during the week, but our early indication is, and my feeling is, Long Islanders really love their cars, and maybe residents are either using their cars, walking, or going to other places, because they live in Port Jeff. I mean, all day long, we can, we can do that, and I could take surveys, too, but it's, it's below expectations, and I need to report that.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Our next department update is from Clerk Sylvia Perillo.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. Regarding the upcoming regatta...
Is your, is your microphone on?
No.
Okay.
Kevin?
It's not going green. Do you want to grab that one over here?
It looks like the cord is long enough to, to bring it over. No, it's Sylvia's present, Sylvia's talking. Maybe the batteries are dead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again. Good evening. I'll be brief. Regarding the upcoming regatta, which will be held on September 9th, the committee is now meeting weekly. Thank you. The committee is now meeting weekly, and has ramped up the committee meetings accordingly. Senior citizen exemption notices will be mailed this month, and also in December. That is to make residents aware of their potential eligibility for a tax reduction. The village website is in the process of being completely revitalized. While we go through that process, we are also adding updates to make it more user-friendly. One important one is that front and center, you will notice that we now have a category for employment opportunities for the village, so I wanted to call that to everyone's attention. Our next board meeting will be held on the 21st, with a note to, please remember that we have a public hearing that evening regarding stop signs. Proposed local law to change our code regarding stop signs.
Stop signs located on Skraggie Hill Road.
Yes.
Okay. Proposed stop signs located on Skraggie Hill Road. Okay, thank you. We will enter into our board report section of the meeting, and we did not add trustee names, if we did not receive any agenda items from them prior to the meeting, but again, trustees are welcome to speak, even if they're off agenda. So Deputy Mayor Cassay, if you'd like to begin.
Good evening again. Wanted to give a brief report regarding the August 5th electronic recycling event. That was the first village sponsor, or, we didn't pay for the event, but it was sponsored by the village to have the recycling of electronics collected. Many thanks to Kevin, who, Kevin Wood, who partnered with that effort, as well as one of our own residents in the, the company that was there. I don't want to get the company name wrong. Green? E-Green. E-Green Recycling Management. Thank you. It's so good. It just, didn't want to get the order wrong there. So that was a successful event for its first time. We are going to look at the statistics once they are in as a board, and hope to repeat that event. We think that it was not only successful physically in the collection of electronic recycling, but also getting the word out to residents who might not have been aware that, you know, don't put that TV in the trash. Don't, you know, don't throw out certain things that have the potential to be recycled, so that those toxic elements of the electronics do not end up in the landfill, but also so that the elements can be reused, so that there's less mining of them throughout the world. So please keep that in mind as your, as an electronic breaks, or you're doing a fall cleaning later this year, whatever it is, put a little spot aside in your garage or your basement for the next e-recycling event, so that those will end up in the place they need to end up. And we'll report back more when we have the statistics regarding that. The tree committee has sent along reports from the New York Urban Forestry Council's Relief Conference, that three members and myself as the liaison attended for the tree committee. I will compile those and send them along to the board, but some highlights included opportunities for tree surveying. In Port Jefferson Village, we spoke to some professionals who facilitate companies and efforts to survey trees, and, and the grant opportunities that they're accustomed to engaging with for municipalities to cover the cost of those efforts. So that was a great connection to make there. Looking, we had seminars on tree selection for tree pits versus, versus roadways, versus, you know, all of these different factors. We had experts from all around the state come in and talk about their experience, folks from New York City parks and street trees, who, if, if anybody knows tree pit trees, it's New York City folks there. Piggybacking on that, there was a lot of information on how to calculate the value of existing and new trees. A lot of times, we just see trees as a tree, and maybe some folks say, oh yeah, it's, it's pretty, but don't acknowledge the, the monetary value that that tree brings to municipality. For instance, stormwater absorption, and so a tree is actually a part of our infrastructure to manage stormwater issues, because it helps the water absorb on-site. And another example is increased property values. So properties that have established trees on, on their property, near their property, statistically have a greater value. So there are just two examples of the monetary value of having trees. We learn about how to better write effective tree code and policies, and networked with representatives from different municipalities, utilities, community groups, and other great resources to bring back to the village. So again, I will send all of the individual letters from the attendees to the board here, but all in all, it was a really productive way to help kick off Port Jefferson Tree Committee's efforts, and again, bring a statewide knowledge base back to our village here, and we look forward to putting that into action. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Any, does anyone else have things to say? Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. As liaison to the Parks Department, I want to thank the department for the work that they did on the July 4th prep. Here's some of the items that the Parks Department are taking care of that often go unnoticed. Un... Installing an emergency path on the beach using snow fence for the July 4th celebrations, cleaning up the parade route, weeding, gardening, gardening beds along the way, mowing, cleaning up the outside of the village hall, putting the bunting on the balcony and taking care of the, the beds. Setting up and dismantling the showmobile and the sound system for the parade and for the swearing-in ceremony on the steps of village hall. Continuing with everyday maintenance, garbage pickup, watering, hanging baskets, and planters. Taking care of Joe Earl's softball field, mowing, prepping infield, laying chalk lines on the infield, painting outfield lines. And also, as Kevin will attest, we had rain when we had the, the port pause and they were able to, to put the, the ball field back in, back in working order so there, so we could have softball. Rocketship Park, they take care of the public restrooms. They are cleaned every day. They do a thorough check of, of all the playground equipment. At Harborfront Park, they do a complete garbage pickup, mowing, weeding of gardening beds and vandalism repairs and graffiti cleanup. Texaco Park, as not a lot of people know it, there's a park uptown up off of Texaco. They do garbage pickup of their, maintenance check performed every two to, two to three days a week, mowing and weeding. East and West Beaches, garbage pickup, mowing and weeding. They installed a handicap mat that was at West Beach, added at the base of the stairs. In September, they'll officially close the beach, which consists of taking signs down, installing officially beach closed signs, removing the lifeguard stands. Beach ropes will be removed as well shortly after the beach is closed. Beach restrooms will remain open until approximately November 1st, 2023. They also installed a handicap mat that was added at the end of the parking on East Beach. They added a volleyball net at the beach for added resident recreation. So that's everything that the Parks Department did. So I'm also liaison for the DPW and the Highway Department and just to give you a little rundown of what, what they've been doing for the past month. And Melissa, I will let them know about, about your street and see if we can get something, something added to the, to the list. I know Steve does a thorough background and checking of all the roads and I'll make sure that he has a Marocchi Trail on, on the list. As far as paving, they did, they paved Randall Avenue, Hallett Oaks, Oak Street. Half of it was funded by National Grid as a pilot program, so we don't have the checkerboard roadway every time they dig up for gas main replacements, water main replacements, et cetera. They've also agreed to subsidize half of the paving costs on the project over, over Old Post Road East and some of the side streets involving there. They've encountered, or they've completed paving on village hall parking lot, Beach Street, Tilcon from the power plant to, from Tilcon to the power plant on Beach Street, Row Lane, Jefferson Landing Circle, Deerfield Court, Red Oak, Red Oak Court Extension, Ellen Drive Extension, and Stony Hill Road. Woodside Avenue has been road repair in-house that milled out the bad area and strip patched, and that was all done by DPW employees, not by a contractor. They've installed parking lot arrows and handicap stalls painted at Mill Creek by the Port Jeff Brewery. New one will be added and do not enter signs, signs will be installed shortly. New speed bump, as Chief Owen talked about. Oh, I'm sorry, the new speed bump was installed at the Port Jefferson Country Club. And speed bumps were painted yellow to slow speeders down through the country club. Drainage repairs from heavy rains that caused sinkholes on Old Post Road and Oakwood Road have also been investigated. They've assisted code with placement of speed trailer, as Chief Owen talked about, on Brook Road for traffic study. They have obtained quotes for speed bumps at Scraggy Hill Road, again, as the chief spoke about. They've conducted drainage repair at Texaco Avenue and Sheep pasture road, and they've had a couple of in-house truck repairs that were made a great financial savings to the village by doing it in-house and then sending it out. So that's my two liaison reports. I would like to thank Kevin for setting up my, my remote from last week's meeting. I was away on a, at a family vacation, a pre-planned family vacation. I wasn't able to attend and Kevin was kind enough to, to set things up, so I was able to, to attend and to participate in the meeting. And on a personal note, I just want to congratulate my daughter, Victoria, because also at our pre-planned vacation, she got engaged last week, so I want to congratulate her and, yeah.
Congratulations.
That was another fun thing that we had on, on vacation, so, thank you. Gaining the sun, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Giuliano. There was one other thing that I think Parks was looking into and that was possibly creating a net extension above the softball field fences so that, do you, do you want to talk about that for a sec?
Yeah, no, Dave didn't fill me in on that, so I don't know.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait until next, next report. Okay. All right, thank you. Keeping the softballs out of the Mill Creek, that's the goal.
Right.
Thousands of them. Trustee Laux, would you like to report?
I'm guilty. I was away last week, did not get my report in, but I do have a report from the Recreation Department. It's too bad that we don't give this report a little earlier because I see a lot of people have left. We have some important events that are coming up. This Thursday, August 10th, in Harborfront Park, one of our Better Concerts, music of Fleetwood Mac. It starts at 7:00. Also on Thursday, October, August 17th, is the annual village golf outing. This outing is open to all residents, employees of the village, and employees of any businesses in the village. This is a great opportunity to play the golf course, have refreshments, possibly win some prizes. The inclusive price of this outing is $75. You can register online. You can register at the village center or you can call the pro shop to register your, you don't have to have a foursome. You can go up there all by yourself and we'll fix you up with a foursome. On August 19th and 20th, we have the Lysic Boat Building at the center. That's from 9:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. On August 24th is the concert on the ferry dock. It's a yearly concert. This year's theme is foreign journey. We have a special guest star, Randy Jackson. This concert will start at 7:00 and it's sponsored by the Port Jefferson Ferry Company. Looking to head to September, the Port Jefferson Conservancy is inviting you to the hill climb. You can see cars from 1910 to 1980 on display and eventually climb East Main Street. You can begin seeing the, the display as early as 8:00 in the morning on that day. The Recreation Department is presently running senior programs on both Wednesdays and Thursdays from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have watercolor classes. We have gentle chair exercise programs. We have book clubs. We have knitting and crocheting, pencil drawing, healthcare classes, and much more for the seniors. Looking ahead to the fall, we're working with the school district to hopefully have use, more use of some of their facilities, especially the swimming pool. We're going to try to get some swimming classes in, in the winter months and some free swim for adults also. The department has many more programs that I have not mentioned and many of them will fill up rapidly. I recommend that you go online at wwwportjeff.com or call the center if you're interested in any of these programs. Just one more bit of information following up on what Trustee Giuliano mentioned. The beaches will be covered with lifeguards through and including Labor Day weekend. That Monday, the lifeguards will no longer be at the beach. Beaches will still obviously be open, but you will not have lifeguards there. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gianna, going good? Okay, I just wanted to report on just a list of the meetings that I've had over the past four weeks or so. And without detail or ado, I, the detail would take us forever, but I just wanted to give residents a sense of how much activity has been going on in the, in the village hall over the past weeks since I was sworn in. So I met with Port Jefferson EMS. I met with the ferry company, Fred Hall, to discuss roadway issues and plans that the ferry company is, has in place to construct a new building across the street from the village hall on the old Suffolk County Water Authority building lot. I met with the government and community, community relations folks from Long Island Railroad and MTA. I got a great report from them on what's happening there and was able to convey some concerns that our residents had expressed through me to them. And they're responsive and working on those things currently. Met with our independent auditor, Colin N. Danowski, to review recent audits and reports on that front. Met with the government relations folks from National Grid, our neighbors down the road at the power plant, and spoke over the phone with government relations representative from LIPA, so trying to piece together information about the power plant and the disposition thereof. Met with executive leadership at Mathur Hospital, Northwell Health, and had a, had a great conversation with them. And I just want to acknowledge that Clerk Perillo has just been accompanying me as sort of, she's proof that these things actually did happen, but also very important for the clerk to be there too because she's meeting these people in real time and getting to know what the village operation is all about and, and our partners and our community members and our, our resident neighbors and whatnot. So thank you for tolerating all this extra work, right? We're, you know, I'm grateful to you. And also several trustees have joined in some of these meetings as well, I'll acknowledge. So we met with the, the leadership from the, the regatta, the village cup, to be briefed on that. And the regatta takes place, again as a reminder, on September 9th. And it is welcome to village residents to compete against people who work at Mathur Hospital and it benefits the Lust Garden Foundation and the palliative care program at Mathur Hospital. So again, that's September 9th. There's information on our website, on Facebook and social media, and also on the Mathur Hospital website. If you want to enter, it's $50 and it's basically a great day of sailing and food and fun and competition, as long as the weather's nice. And I met with the harbor commissioner representing Port Jefferson, and he is the chair of the harbor commission. That's Harry Faulkner. Met with the bid, Business Improvement District at their meeting last month, late last month. Met with Chamber of Commerce and Chief Owen mentioned that. I was in that same meeting with them and responded to some of their questions and their issues in real time, to the extent that I could. Met with our contracted grant writer, Nicole Christian, along with other representatives of the board and some of our staff members to get an update on, grant writing is such a huge and important part of what we do here in village government and can't be understated or underestimated in terms of the amount of work that goes into grant writing for, to get, to get funding and matching funds. So, and appreciate Trustee Cassay for all, all that she does in that area because you do a lot of heavy lifting there. Met with the Greater Port Jefferson Arts Council, Alan Ferella and Paul Braille to talk about the Dickens Festival and our role in that and as the host of the Dickens Festival and what we can do and how we can partner. I met with, let's see, the Historical Society. Trustee Cassay, Trustee Cassay and I had a special tour of the Mathur House Museum and reflected on history through a look at the clock museum there. So that was fun and it's just a very interesting tour to take if you have time. The docents there are very helpful and, and they like doing what they're doing and on a volunteer basis, of course. And then more meetings planned, meeting with the fire department this week, meeting with the school district and meeting with leadership from Stonerbrook University at the executive level. So also hoping to set up a meeting with the Suffolk County Police. I've done some outreach there just to thank them for all the work that they do in Port Jefferson and their focus here. And I also met with town supervisor Ed Romaine. So, and that was a very interesting and informative meeting and I appreciated his time there where, and that was following the press conference about the bridge project that is taking place over the tracks on Sheep pasture road. So that process is going to be slow in coming, but, you know, they have to go through every single aspect of the design phase and the bidding process and the whole entire, in the whole nine yards. So it'll be, we'll be grateful when that bridge is, bridge project is complete. But we're grateful that the town was able to identify the funds and get that project moving with the MTA. So that's a summary. I probably missed something here or there, but I'm grateful for this little handy-dandy notebook that a friend gave me and the pens that I use. I never did that before at Stonerbrook. I typed all my notes in real time, but I'm finding this notebook is amazing and it helps me go back to it easily. But that's, that's me. Sorry. Okay, so that is my report and if we have no further questions or discussion, do we have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Giuliano, second by Trustee Cassay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.